Just testing the mic, can everyone hear me? Good? Great. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight's public hearing. It's a sunny day in Prince Rupert, so the fact that y'all made it out here on a sunny day shows that this is a very important issue for the community. I'm just gonna start off by calling the public hearing to order. So first up tonight, we'll have a report from our planning department, and then we're gonna have a presentation from the developer. And then from there, the public's gonna be asked to come one by one at either of the mics on each side. And you'll be able to speak on the topic and share whatever views you have. And we won't put any time limits or anything like that on people's ability to speak. And I'll go through kind of the process of, you know, what the process will look like at that point. But for now, we'll hear from our planning department and from the developers, and then we'll get into the public hearing. So Mr. Bucken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the public, sorry, of the bylaw, 3475, is to allow a 22 and 1/2 meter high building providing 70 apartments on the subject property. 12 of these apartment units would be exclusively used for seniors housing. Lakewalams Housing Society has applied to rezon the above the properties from the current R2 zone to the RM2 multifamily zone. The applicant proposes to develop 20 affordable homes to serve the Lakewalams First Nation. The development would include a mix of units, including studio, 1, 2, and 3 bedroom units. A traffic impact study by McIlhany Engineering was conducted to assess the impact of the development. In response to the study, the applicant has agreed to undertake the recommendation, recommended measures as follows. Install a stop sign at the point of access. Install no parking signs as recommended near the access to improve sightlines from Edward Street and to the development site. Develop and implement a traffic management procedure for construction phase. Install a sidewalk east of 11th Avenue along the property frontage. Restrict 12 units to seniors housing only in order to reduce parking demand and to provide some on-street parking stalls. They'll provide secure sheltered bike parking near the front access. And to secure these measures, the applicant will agree to registering a Section 219 covenant to restrict the use of the 12 residential units to senior housing only and to require the proposed traffic measures. The applicant's design team and representative are present and will provide more detail on their proposal.
Thank you. I'm just hearing feedback in the mic. So, yeah, Mr. Bucken, you turn your mic off, and then I think it's one mic at a time up here. Yeah, perfect. So we'll invite the developer to come forward and say a few words about the project. Are they doing it in person, Ms. Miller? Oh, that's you? Okay. Well, if you want to do it from there, you can do it from there, or is there a place up here? Ms. Miller, do they have a presentation prepared?
Presentation?
Perfect, okay.
Can everybody hear me in the room? Yep, good. Hi, everybody. My name is Heidi Nesbit. I'm here on behalf of the developer, which is a bit of a funny term for this project because we're representing the Lakewalams Band, B.C. Housing. And I myself am an architect from Vancouver on behalf of Human Studio and Michael Green Architecture. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge the land that we're having this meeting on, the nine allied tribes of the Territory. Thanks, Harvey, of the Lakewalams. So thank you very much. So if everybody can hopefully see the presentation on your right up there, this is, as Rob described, for a 70-unit rental housing project on 11th. I'm gonna go through a few slides that show you the site. I think everybody's pretty familiar with it if you're here already. And I think I recognize some of you from the open house that we held earlier this year. We're gonna, I'm gonna give you a little bit of that context and then go into some details, some more renderings like this. These are digital renderings that savvy people in our office and Michael Green's office put together to imagine what the site might look like. And then we'll show some architectural drawings as well before we open it up to questions and comments. So we have the next slide, Rosa. Next one. So here we are, visiting the site, I think a couple of years ago now, Harvey, is that right? When we kicked off? So we have worked really closely with B.C. Housing, who provides the funding for this project through their Indigenous Housing Fund to kind of scope the project with the city of Prince Rupert to find a site for the project. And next slide, Rosa. We came up with, sorry, this is a little background. You can go through the next couple of slides on Human Studio and Michael Green Architecture, just our experience with tall wood structures. But what I want to talk about are the project values here that we collaboratively came up with together, and I think that really still hold true for this project. So we're building community connections. I think that's a really important piece. This site is super well-located for that in terms of physical connections. And then also, I think, just in terms of providing long-term stable housing for the nation as well within the city limits is a really critical piece that this project is giving back. We wanted to powerfully express the Lakewalams' cultural identity. So you'll see, although it hasn't been completely solidified exactly what those artistic expressions are gonna look like, you'll see some notional ideas of what we've been working with on the project and some areas that we're looking at to express some of the Lakewalams' identity in the project. Of course, always balancing quality with cost. So we're working with B.C. Housing. We have a budget. The sky is not the limit, but we're trying to balance some of the traffic measures we heard were important to the community along with this deeply sloping site. A big setback on the site that I'll talk about in a little bit that addresses a stream that's running on the site. That sort of leads into the next one, sustainable and responsive to the site. So as most of you know, this is a forested site. It is a beautiful intersection of two streams. We have been asked to respect the development permit area that gives us a 30-meter setback, I believe, from the stream. And so you'll see that on our drawings coming up. And finally, the quality of experience was really important to the Lakewalams. And what we mean by that is that everybody had equal views and an equal experience of units. So there's no unit that is the executive suite, for want of a better word. So they all have views that are in both north and south facing. So they get through ventilation and they all have access to kind of a view of that stream side and the trail that runs along the back of the project. Next slide. Context. So here we are. Everybody knows where we are right now. Sometimes we include this because the architectural and engineering team is obviously from all across the province. So this helps locate everybody on the site and remind everybody where the Lakewalams are located further north of here. Obviously, as I learned tonight, they have even more community members in the city of Prince Rupert than they do in Lakewalams itself. Next slide. Getting closer, you can see our little site there on 11th Ave. Next slide. Getting closer. You can see just some of that interconnectedness with the trails. It's really central, really great location, I think, for this project. Next slide. And this one's an important slide because I received a lot of questions for those of you that emailed during the feedback period. They did come all to me, so I read them all carefully and hopefully responded to them all satisfactorily for everybody. But one of the questions that came up quite often was some miscommunication about where the property actually was. So it doesn't fill up the whole green space. It's just a small little piece of it. And you'll see the kind of legal description in a minute, but I think this aerial photo is also helpful in locating the project on the site. So you can see the dotted lines show the stream setback. And very faintly, the blue line is the actual stream. Next slide. So again, it's got a little bit of a panhandle onto 11th. So we can't actually access from anywhere we want. We've got a fairly narrow place to access the site. And then we have to slope down quite quickly. So that's where that angled driveway, and again, I'll show you some more pictures of that, and the really important work that McIlhany did in kind of helping us both lay that out. They're actually our civil engineers as well, and do the traffic study to understand the impact this would have on the surrounding traffic close. Next slide. So here we are. The orange line is our site boundary. You can see the residential properties surrounding it. And again, that P1 zoning that is not impacted at all, staying the same, or I understand the foreseeable future. Next slide. And so here's the design. I think since it was presented at the open house, it hasn't, none of the major pieces have changed. So I think what we heard was some real concerns about how the project was fitting into the context of the forest and that it wasn't standing out too much, and as well predominantly, a lot of concerns about traffic and the vehicle entrance. So just to give you a really high-level understanding of how the project works, you enter off of 11th, enter and exit. You'll go down, again, this is, these grades are all determined by basically getting a fire truck down there. So it's fairly low sloping, which is why we have to make that curve go all the way around like it is. Parking all along, as much as we could fit in with the constraints of our site, gets you down to basically two buildings that are on what we call a single-loaded corridor. What that means is that unlike a typical apartment building where you might have an indoor corridor with units on each side, this has actually an open corridor with one unit. So the corridor is open to the air. And what that does is it really allows every person in a unit to walk outside. So it's a much more connected experience to nature and quite a bit more of a dignified living experience. Next slide. Here's the cross-section. And again, you can see on the right of this slide, the stream. And then as it slopes up, we've created a bit of a level spot for the building. You can see this is, one of our opportunities for art is actually, this is like a slice through the building right in the middle, and that's where we would have some amenity space and some views in both directions. You've got your parking area and then some of the undeveloped land and undisturbed forest that's actually not part of our site right where this section is taken, right up to 11th Ave. And the important thing about this project is another, or this image, is another question that I got asked quite a bit was why some of our drawings look like the project is only three stories. And the reason is, is that those drawings are taken, the renderings are taken from the street. So from 11th Ave, you can see that that dotted line means that from a person or a driver's perspective, the project actually will appear to only be three stories and sit really well within the forest. Next slide. Again, here's that image that I had lots of questions about. So about three stories, this is, so if you were coming straight from Edward Ave into the intersection, this is, you know, to the best of our ability. Of course, we can only do so much with our Photoshop strategies, but I think this does a pretty good job of communicating what the project would look like set within the forest. So there, the landscape plan is all native materials and is, the intent is to restore any habitat that we're disrupting with similar or better. Next slide. Here's some of the species, again, that you'd be very familiar with from your forest right around here. Next slide. This again is the landscape plan. I won't go into it in too much detail. We've got, a lot of this is driven by fire truck access, turnaround, garbage, all the kind of practical nuts and bolts of a site while still fitting those 70 units that, again, have that access of views and air and light on both sides. Next slide. Here's the breakdown of the units. I just wanted to include this slide as a reminder that we're really trying to access, serve as many needs within the Lakewalams community as we could. So what was expressed to us at the beginning of the project was that there's really great demand for family housing. So we really tried to focus the housing on the 3-bedroom units. The other thing we've done is, as Rob mentioned, there will be those eight studios that are reserved for elders. They're all accessible, so fully handicapped accessible for any kind of mobility impairment. On top of that, what we're doing with the studios, you'll see in the slide in a minute, is we're always connecting them to another suite. So a studio is always placed beside a medium-sized suite with an interconnecting door. And our idea with that is that there's some opportunities for intergenerational living and support, something that really usually doesn't happen with an apartment complexes. So we think this is gonna be really successful for kind of providing something more akin to the way that community members might be living in houses. Next slide. Here's the units themselves. You can ask me any questions you want about them. They're quite generous for what they are, but also governed by B.C. Housing guidelines. So again, we have really tall windows. What those do is they let a lot of light in. I understand that you get more rain even than I do in North Vancouver. And I know that what I really appreciate living in the forest is having full-height windows. And what that does is that basically, when you walk up to a window, instead of having a really high window, you actually feel like you are part of the forest. And so you feel like, even though you may be on the sixth story of an apartment building, that you're still connected to nature. So every one of these units has that. And again, they have the opportunity for cross-ventilation, which a typical apartment wouldn't. So if you open up a door on one side on those rare sunny days like today and a window on the other side, you're gonna get beautiful breezes coming through. Next slide. Here's the layout of the building overall. Very quickly, you can see that it's split into two separate parts. Has an amenity space in the middle with a stair. The green block on the top is the ground, on the ground floor plan is a gathering space. Again, providing some amenity for larger group gatherings. Obviously, when you're in a small apartment, you can't have a lot of people over. Next slide. The material palette has changed slightly since the open house, although not drastically. What we're looking at is, again, connecting back to nature, that stream, the forest setting, putting as much wood as we can into the project. Next slide. So what we have done is gone to more of a green palette so that it does fit into the forest. We had a bit more of a dark gray and black palette. And I think that what we heard is that it was a little bit maybe depressing. So we've tried to brighten it up a bit while still having it fit into its context. We've also added back in a bunch of the natural wood. Next slide. This is a different perspective. Next slide. So the wood is basically along those outdoor corridors. So it not only will be a beautiful warm glow with the lights, especially at night, but it will also just be a really wonderful tactile experience for people going to their front door every day. The screen that you see on the right of the project is one of the opportunities that we see for public art. And so we have been working with the Lakewalams to determine exactly what that's gonna look like. Next slide. You'll see that, I think, here. So that's an outdoor stair and open to, protected from the weather, but open to air and cross-ventilation. It's perforated screen, and we're going to have some, again, a full-height piece of artwork right there. Next slide. I think that might be it. Oh, one more close-up one. This is the main entrance of the building. You can see that lovely wood, the view straight through to the forest when you come up to the building, and the green metal siding as well. So super durable for the community. I think it's very important going forward, obviously, that this project can stand the test of time as well. And I think that might be it. One more. This is the backside from the stream. That's it. So I'm not sure, Rosa, if we have people on Zoom? No, okay. So that was really quick because I want to respect that a lot of you have heard me talk on this project already at length and/or write on it. So I want to give preference to all the people that want to talk. Thanks very much.
That's the reporter with the phone. Okay, thank you very much. So next, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do kind of a first-come, first-served speaking at the mic. We'll have people line up behind the mic. And if there's lines on both sides, we'll alternate each mic. Before we do that, I just want to say, you know, we all live in Prince Rupert. We all want the best for this community. So one of the, you know, my message to you tonight is that to speak clearly, speak passionately, but, you know, speak to be heard, which means, you know, you can get your point across and we will listen to everything you have to say. No, we're not gonna let anyone not have an opportunity to say what they want to say tonight. So just know that you will be heard tonight. And then after the public hearing is concluded, we're gonna have our regular council meeting this evening. And that's where council will discuss this project. So in this moment, we won't be doing a back-and-forth with you. We're strictly here to listen to your comments and your concerns. But after this public hearing is adjourned into our regular meeting, we will have another conversation specifically about this project. So before we begin, I have a legal process here. I have to read out what's called a statement of the chair, and then we will begin. So a public hearing is organized under Section 890 of the Local Government Act. Every person present who believes that their interests in the property affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard, respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, comments will be restricted to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. A person may make their statement in writing as outlined in the public notice. And if perceived by the deadline, their presentation will be read by the corporate administrator at the public hearing. If a person wishes to make a presentation at the public hearing, they are welcome to do so, provided that the following criteria are followed in order to allow for the recording of the public hearing process. The chairperson will recognize only those individuals who present themselves through the corporate administrator. Presenter shall be provided with five minutes to address council. Prior to speaking, please provide your full name and be prepared to spell your surname for the corporate administrator. Please also provide your residential or business address. Should you wish to read from a prepared statement, the city will require a copy for reference purposes to the corporate administrator. Members of council may, if they so wish, this is not a question period at which time a debate takes place. City council will not provide any comments on issues raised, but will be in attendance to listen to the comments presented. Should no additional speakers present themselves, the chair will call three times for anyone else to speak to the matter. And if no one else comes forward, the public hearing will be adjourned. After the public hearing has adjourned, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. So that being said, folks can come forward to the mics and just make sure you say your name and your address. That's for legal process. And we'll go with, if you want to queue up, you can do that. But we'll start over here. Welcome.
Good evening. Lloyd Quast, 1227 11th Avenue East. I have two questions. Can anybody tell me what the tax benefit to the city is going to be? The proposed tax benefit? And the sewer and water hookups, will they be borne by the taxpayers of Prince Rupert or the developer?
Yeah, we have those questions noted, but I'm not sure if we want to answer those here, Mr. Bucken, or not.
I'm not prepared to answer the one on the tax. Mr. Pucci, do we have any information on the sewer and who's paying for that? So the developer will pay the cost of service hookups?
But nobody has an estimate of the tax benefit to the city?
Not at this time. Once it's built, it'll have a proposed value and then whatever the tax rate will be from there. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Kayla Daniele. I'd just like to thank you for letting us voice our concerns over the rezoning. And I apologize, I'm definitely not a public speaker, so bear with me. As a homeowner of the area in question and as a taxpayer of the city, I feel very strongly against rezoning the area in question. We have made many sacrifices and saved to make the biggest purchase of our lives to live in that area. When we purchased, we were told it was a residential living area and parkland. I made the choice in that location based on the information given to us by the city. I did not want to live around, or surrounding, by large buildings. And we made that choice by not buying by one or in a zoned area for that. The proposal itself brings many questions and concerns. I feel there's no transparency in this project. The fact that the project was brought to the local paper as a done deal years ago before even going to the zoning process makes me wonder and what else is being held from us. The project is being spun in the papers as well as help for the community and for the housing crisis, yet limiting who's allowed to live in there. In the meeting when we spoke with you with the developer, they also confirmed this. Obviously, it's not for the community. It is only for the Lakewalams Band members only. With such a housing crisis, I'm wondering why and how this is helping our community. I never also got a straight answer from the developer when we spoke in regards to what other areas were decided, or looked at before deciding on 11th. It's one of the highest-traffic areas and most densely populated on the east side. Why are parcels of lands that are already ready for development not considered before this? There's many vacant schools like Seal Cove, Westview, that are not being, why are they not being purchased for a project this size? Why are you not looking at places like the Hydrolots, which can accommodate something this size, as well as future developments for people other than the band members in our community that can live there? Again, traffic is a major issue on the street. Adding 200, 300 people and their cars increases the problem. I can speak as a homeowner and somebody who drives the road daily. You take a chance every time you pull out of that driveway. You can't see because of the hills, the blind spots, and the other cars that are parked on the street. I do not trust that I can let my kids out and cross the street without worrying about their safety. Again, in regards to the entrance, the overflow obviously is gonna cause more of a hazard than it already is. You have stated in Article 3.2 that the access to the development is not to be an excess number and shall be located on public roads in prominent locations away from areas of potential traffic conflicts. We already know that this area itself is a conflict. The high traffic, the blind spots, the speed, everything is just causing more of an issue for the neighboring houses. There are other concerns that I do have, as well as I know there's other people that have them. In regards to a lot of the bylaws that are stated for RM2, this project does not comply with. In the community plan as well, it states that it will be to scale and the plan shall blend into the neighboring houses. This is the complete opposite of blending into our homes. The site that it shall contribute to a sense of the neighborhood and identity and is more fitting, obviously, to the area. I'd like to know why we cannot build a fence that is over 1.5 meters on our own property that we pay taxes for, yet you can put a commercial-sized building in our backyards? In regards to the light, I did, I was one of the people that did ask in regards to the lights for the housing. Speaking from experience with someone who lives in the area and does have floor-to-ceiling windows, it is extremely dark on that street, and you're putting these people down in a hole. So how is that helping anybody? Like, it's not gonna help if you're putting three to four of these floors underground. Also, this is represented as family living, but yet there is no area in which there will be a park or anything for kids or other family members to play. We don't even have enough parking spots for this development, for the amount of units. And the off-street parking, like you said, is just causing more of a hazard for everybody in the neighborhood. I'd like to get the mayor and council, if you could please just close your eyes. Picture your own homes that you've saved, made sacrifices for, your biggest investment. Now go look out your bedroom window, go look out your living room window, go look out your kitchen window. Now put a building bigger than the Coast Hotel in that window. I'd like you to please understand why we don't want a commercial-sized building in the middle of a highly dense and highly-traffic residential area. The bylaws are set out for a reason. And in rezoning this, you're creating a precedence for future commercial-sized buildings to be allowed next to our family homes. I'm just asking that mayor and council take our consideration and please do not rezone. and please do not rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Council is taking notes, and we will have a robust discussion after the public hearing as well. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Got a microphone in front of me. You know what happens when I get a microphone, right? Is a resident of Prince Rupert homeowner?
Mr. Nagy, can you please...
Oh, sorry. Here, we might as well do it the proper way. My English name is Arnie Nagy. My Haida name is Talatska Chin Kilju. I am of the Skogjigal clan of the Haida Nation. My great-grandfather is Chief Wia. My Haida name means "strong salmon voice." I rise and support it as somebody that lives on 8th Avenue East and close to affordable housing on Frederick Street and on Hayes Cove. I look out my front window, I see the apartments. Does it bother me? No. I live in the house that I grew up in. And at that time on 7th East, there was a proposal put forward that was fought by many on city council, Alderman, Evelyn Basso, and others, to stop this type of housing happening. I'm proud to say that my family supported it, and I would support it today if it went behind my house, because I own that house. It's another cul-de-sac built the same way as the properties on 11th. And I can tell you one thing. My property value has not decreased at all because of this type of social housing, affordable housing. In fact, every year, my property value has been escalating by amounts that I have a hard time understanding myself. So I don't buy into that argument at all. I know that there is a stream located behind this project. And I have faith in my sisters and brothers in the Nine Allied Tribes that were raised with the respect of the environment and the resources that come from a clean watershed. I would suggest that there was more of a threat to the salmon than any other ecosystems when that cul-de-sac was built alongside the Hayes Creek River, Creek. As a child, I grew up playing in the Hayes Creek. We used to walk the pipelines. That was how we got to the civic center back in the day. I think many in this room have probably done the same things. As somebody that studied fish biology for five years, come from the fishing industry, and for the last 40 years have been on the front lines fighting for the resource and the protection of environment, I can rest assured and not have any worries about damage going to be done to any of that fish that may be in any of those creeks or any of the animals around that area. I think we as humans have to start taking a look at the needs of this community and stop saying, "Not in my backyard, not in my backyard." I've seen it. I've seen the effects of what's happening to our elders and trying to find affordable housing that is accessible to them. I work as an Aboriginal advocate here in Prince Rupert. I deal with housing issues and trying to help the elders find some secure housing that they can afford to live in. I know some of my views in regards to this might not be the most popular, and that's fine. But I'm not going to get into a situation where we start putting people down because of economics. Not everybody works at the port. And believe me, a lot of the people that we deal with and that I have dealt with in the past that worked at the ports are also having a heck of a time being able to afford the rents in this town. Because not everybody's working seven days a week down there. The fishing industry has been decimated by Jimmy Patterson and government policies. People need a home. People complain about the children on the streets because there's not safe housing. Come on, I think it's time that we start showing a little compassion. And I know this project was done with the traditional values that we have as First Nations people, to respect our family members. If we look in this town, native or non-native, how many families are being forced to live together in homes because that's the only option left in order for them to stay off the streets and not be homeless? It's a crime. You know, as I say, I'm happy to see this. If they put it in my backyard and I was on this, if this proposal was there, if those houses weren't there, I'd be the first in line to sign the petition to say, "Yes, let's proceed." Because I believe in this type of social housing. It's fundamentally... Well, let's put it this way. Housing is not a privilege. Housing is a right. And I'm not going to get too carried on, because as I said, you know what I'm like with a mic, but I support this, and I really think the idea of cojoining the seniors' housings with the other rooms is a great idea that allows our seniors and our elders to have the dignity of their own place without having to feel like they're a burden to their families. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you guys, when you get into your talks, that you carry this and you pass it, and we get on with this project. The only thing that I would suggest in the plan of this, because you'll be hearing from me if you don't, is in regards to the use of chemicals, pesticides, fertilizers, and et cetera that may have the problems of leaking into any of those creeks and contaminating any fish habitat.
Thank you. Mr. Nagy, I forgot to get your address. We need that for the legal process, sorry.
For my hate mail? Just a joke. 1235 8th Avenue East.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Welcome.
Hello. Cody Curry, 960 Edward Avenue. I just want to touch upon Mr. Nagy's comments here. I think we all advocate for housing. It's needed everywhere. We want it, we need it, but it has to be in the right location. So if I have to come up here as someone, I'm definitely against this project. I live at the cross street at Edward Avenue. So I just want to ask a few questions, and maybe these have been answered somewhere else, but I haven't heard them, and I'm hoping tonight we can get... I can at least hear them. One is being, why this spot? Why of all spots, this spot? It's down in a swamp, it's near residential housing, and it's at a cross street with a blind hill. I think the project said it was going to be a four-way stop. Is that correct, at Edward Avenue? Or, sorry, it would be, yeah, a four-way stop, because it'd be the entrance to the apartments and on 11th. Is that correct?
Well, we'll... Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Exactly a four-way stop. So 11th Ave. will still be the primary artery, and both Edward Ave. and the driveway will have a stop sign.
Okay, so stop signs entering 11th Avenue from Edward and the complex, okay. Edward, or 11th Ave. is used right now as a gateway from one corner of town to another, right? We don't have many arteries. That's one of them. Cars go by there every day, because I live there. They go screaming by there, and it's a nightmare, okay? Drunk driving is up, like, whatever it is, 90% in this town, and they all take these routes to get away from the cops. So this happens. We get cars down our cul-de-sac every day, doing donuts, doing whatever they have to do. So traffic in general is a gong show. You're going to add how many, 70-some units? Okay, let's pretend every one of these units has a car. We're adding a lot of traffic to that area. So I think that just has to be looked at. I don't have the answers. I'm just out here asking questions, and obviously, I hope you guys make the right decisions based on this. One of my other questions was, McElhaney did a traffic study. How long was that done over? Was that done one day? Was that over a week?
I'm pretty sure that the McElhaney study took about five weeks. So they started it, it was spring break. They felt like that wasn't an accurate enough time because kids were out of school, and so they extended it for another two weeks to assess.
Is there information on that? Because, again, I live on that street, and I saw a McElhaney truck there for one day. So I would really like to find out.
I believe the public report, the traffic report was publicly available, and we can certainly make it publicly available again. And it has all the data of how they collect their data, how long their strips were out, how often they visited the site.
No, I'm just curious, because, again, I live right there, and I never saw them there. I never saw traffic strips, I never saw cones, I never saw anything. We're just, we're all getting told this information, but without any actual...
Yeah, the report is worth reading, then.
Yeah, and it is available?
If it's not, it was available for a certain period. We can certainly, Rose, I'm sure, make it available again. It's public information.
Okay, another question, if you don't mind. I'm going to join my, I think, old-time plumber right there. I'm a new-time plumber. Water sewer, where is that being directed to? Is that going to be pumped up to 11th Avenue? Or is that being drawn back gravity into another system behind it?
Well, I'll get that answered at the regular meeting. Just going to write it down.
Okay. Because if it's being pumped up to 11th, you're asking for a nightmare. Last question, is there a population cap? There's 70, I know there's 77 units, is that right? 70-something. Is there a population cap on residents? How many families per unit are going to be allowed to live in these buildings? Do we have an answer for that?
So that's a question for the Housing Society, and the exact way that they will rent this out is not really, you know, we don't have all the answers for that, but the intent is that the two- and three-bedrooms are for families, and the studios and one-bedrooms are obviously for individuals.
Right, and then obviously, there's limited parking in the structure. So would that make overflow parking onto 11th Avenue?
So the traffic report also has a parking study as part of it. And part of the reason that that was done is at the request of the planner as part of our application. And so you'll see in there that one of the things that they have asked is a covenant on the ages of those studio units, which was one of our responses.
Okay, because that corner at Edward Avenue coming on from my road is absolutely blind. And it's blind without a car there. You start adding vehicles to there, you can't see anything. So is any of this going to be rectified? And I don't know if those answers are going to be, you're going to come up with those tonight, but they should be asked, because that is not a great spot for an intersection. It's probably the worst logistical spot for an intersection. And my last question, I had it written down. Bear with me. Well, I guess it goes back into the traffic consideration. So if there's added parking, if there's a two-way stop, what you're saying, should it not be a four-way stop? If this thing goes ahead, like, what measures are we going to stop the traffic from actually going down 11th Ave.? Because there's no other artery to the other side of town. And if you're adding, let's say, 100 more vehicles to one little spot, how bad is it actually going to get? So... In my opinion, it's a horrible spot for a building. Oh, sorry, my other question, and this gets brought up all the time. I've had this conversation with many friends, colleagues. You know, this is a topic of conversation around town. Everyone knows what's happening. Why not the other spots? And I know the woman brush on it. Like, there's schools that have been torn down that are just sitting vacant. Our understanding is this is being leased for $1. Why this spot and why not the multiple vacant spots that are already serviced? They already have electrical, they already have plumbing. Why not those spots? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll answer some questions during the regular meeting. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening. Michelle Bryant, 156 Gol Crescent. I'm also a Lakelamps Band member, born and raised here in Prince Rupert. And I am a privileged homeowner. I can buy a house, and I'll tell you why. Without places like this, my mother could not buy her own house. My mother and I lived in B.C. housing when I was a child. This afforded her the ability to then purchase a house, which I then grew up on off of 11th East Alexandra Place. And I think we have to put aside the privilege that people have as homeowners, especially in affluent areas, and recognize the need of places like this. We must forget, we must not forget, this is unceded Nine Allied Tribes territory. It was stolen from us, and yet we are here seeking permission to build a unit of housing for our members in a place, I don't know the history behind this, but this has been talked about for a while now. And to hear the privilege that is coming out from homeowners in the area. We have the Oasis Apartments on Prince Rupert Boulevard that people on Prince Rupert Boulevard look at, and they're not complaining. We have an affluent area on Silver Sides, just above the Oasis Apartments. Would we still hear talking about these same issues if this was a luxury apartment building? I doubt it. When we have 70 units, when we have a membership of over 4,000 in Lakelamps, and the majority of them live here in Prince Rupert, and these are affordable housing, I have a daughter and a grandson who live with me because they can't afford housing in Prince Rupert. So I really want to put into perspective for people and take away the colonial attitudes and the colonial ways of thinking of telling us as Indigenous people, Simshen people, where we can live. That takes us back to the Indian Act. Do you want us to go back to the reserves and not be in this town? I'm sorry, that's not going to happen. And I just want to bring up this statistic from the Poverty Institute. Indigenous peoples in Canada experience the highest levels of poverty. A shocking 1 in 4 Indigenous peoples are 25% or 25% are living in poverty. And 4 in 10, or 40% of Canada's Indigenous children, live in poverty. This is going to help alleviate part of that problem by giving people affordable houses and affordable places to live in a diverse neighborhood. Why do people have to place where people live in socioeconomic areas? Why can't a low-income person live beside a high-income person? It shows them what the possibilities are. We can't start segregating where people live and dictating where people can live and where they cannot live. It needs to be a choice. And if this is where Lakelamps Band wants their housing unit to be, then this is where it should be. This is Lakelamps land. And I want to make very clear that homeowners, regardless of you're Indigenous or not, come from a place of privilege. This housing unit is going to give families a place to call home that maybe they currently do not have now. Regardless of where it is, we have to understand that we live in a place where we will need apartment units. They will be beside our housing, our houses. And we need to accept that and stop tilting it as us and them, Indigenous, non-Indigenous. Let's live together. We are in a time of reconciliation. The reconciliation action plans, well, this is not reconciliation in community member to community member when we're being forced to defend a housing, affordable housing unit such as this and the location where it's placed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, I wanna give a huge thank you to B.C. Housing and the province of British Columbia for giving us this opportunity for my people. And also for the city of Prince Rupert identifying this area for building the seventy units. I see this as a huge opportunity for my people that live in the Rupert here. As you heard mention, over four thousand of our members that we have on our band list, majority of them live right here in Prince Rupert. And yeah, this is our traditional territory. We have never given this up. Things have changed now. The way native people are treated. Big time. You know, we're in reconciliation now with both levels of government. Where we have huge opportunity. Things are starting to improve for our people. You know, I got family here, I got kids that live in Prince Rupert here that work here. I had, my oldest daughter had to move out an apartment. She was gonna move back home with her husband because they couldn't find a place for a long time. They were lucky they found one. They both work here, they've been working here for a while. We don't have that kind of employment in our community, what's happening here in Prince Rupert. We're a big part of what's going on here in Prince Rupert. We negotiated agreement with the port of Prince Rupert. We've created employment for our people. Not only our people, for all over the place, other First Nations that are working at that port. We're also doing that with other companies. Where they're gonna create jobs for our people. And we have to have living accommodations as what's happening here. To me, this is just the start. We're gonna have huge opportunity for our people to work here in Prince Rupert where this is all gonna be happening. That's not gonna be the first part of it. You know, Prince Rupert is close to fifty percent First Nations that live here. They helped Prince Rupert keep going here. When the pulp mill went down, forestry. We were a big part of keeping forestry going when we purchased the Forest Legends. We employed a lot of people and spinoffs from that. We had the All-Native Tournament that happens almost every year in Prince Rupert. Look what it brings into Prince Rupert here. We're a huge part of that. And again, I thank Prince Rupert for identifying this property. To me, that's the first step. For all people. Giving us that opportunity for my people. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologies, Mayor Reese, if you can put your address out for the corporate administrator.
It's Box 213 Lakelamps. Is that where it'll be?
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
My name is Paula Gase. And I'm a law foundation-funded advocate for the region for the Prince Rupert Unemployed Action Center at 818 Third Avenue West. I do poverty law. Arnie and I, we see about, we had twelve hundred files within the last twelve months, six hundred each. Eighty percent of that is related to housing. Number one thing I deal with is evictions, questionable evictions. Every day, people are begging, we find housing for them. We don't even do that, actually. We just do legal advice, help folks secure income so they can pay for the house. The vacancy rate is less than one percent. That's, that's a simple fact. Just go on Facebook and see who posted today looking for a house. We're not just talking low-income folks. Middle-income folks can't afford to live here, single, middle-income folks. Are, they get jobs and they have to go. I mean, we're talking about low-income today, but this is a situation, there is no housing. We're talking about affordable housing, but there's no housing available. And that's, that's a simple fact. I was really excited when I saw this. And then I read there was a petition with a hundred folks didn't want this in their backyard. And I thought about it, I thought, I'm sure there's a lot more folks that want this than don't want it. So we put a little petition together and as of April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, we had five hundred and seventy-nine signatures in support of this project within two days. I will submit those names, I have all the names and addresses. I will submit that. But this is on behalf of the five hundred and seventy-nine folks that signed this. And I'm just gonna read it. The petition is called Revise Prince Rupert Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two. Yeah, that's, that's the group. Dear Mayor Brain and Council, we'd like to make it very clear that we are sitting in a housing crisis. And as a result, we also recognize the desperate need for affordable housing in our community. We firmly believe that housing should not be a privilege but basic human right, a necessity that we all need access to, to ensure good mental, physical, and emotional health. Every person and family in our city deserves this. The petition sounds almost identical to this point. We firmly believe that a six-story, family-oriented residence providing seventy units such as this one would have a positive effect in our neighborhood. What a great view of one of the last remaining forested areas within the city. Hayes Creek runs through the site where there are fish and other habitats among the lush forest. These folks will regularly see deer, wolves, and eagles, including inhabiting the land. Prince Rupert is not a sprawling metropolis, but a small community in the middle of a rainforest. We don't have a lot of space for development. Fortunately, the city has weekly garbage pickup and there will be facilities to people and they'll have somewhere to put their garbage. The increase in traffic to the area with the proposed single point of entry to the site with the proper signage lighted in crosswalks should actually make the roof safer. Even our deer in Prince Rupert know how to use the crosswalks. This will be a welcome to them too. Our neighborhood feels like we need to look at the, our town as a whole. We want to step up in hope that encourages other neighborhoods to step up as well. We love our forests, our animals, and our water, but we love our fellow Prince Rupertites too. We can't wait to see what the new build will look like since Matt La Catla raised the bar and did such a fine job with Cedar Village. As it stands now, a lot of stigma might be attached to a seventy-unit B.C. housing apartment site, but not in our neighborhood. We will welcome these folks with open arms. This stigma might serve to draw a line in the sand between various socio-economic groups. But again, we firmly believe that housing should not be a privilege but a basic human right, a necessity that we all need access to. And since every person and family in the city needs this, as a result, we stand united with our fellow citizens so that we will no longer see blatant racism, classism run rampant in this city. From a practical standpoint, surrounding property values should increase and the neighborhood becomes more desirable. It's a win-win situation for everyone. We also believe that affordable housing units should be spread throughout the city's various neighborhoods to unite us all as a community. As it stands now, Eleventh Avenue East is the site that the city has agreed to lease for sixty years for one dollar, making it possible for the proponent to even build this project. We would like to thank the city for stepping up and facing this housing crisis that we are in. There are things that we hold dear to us that you cannot put a price tag on. People, safety, natural beauty, and building lasting community relationships, integration, the reason we've all chose to live in this fantastic little community to begin with. Mayor and council, please support this resounding request. Encourage other proponents as well to develop more affordable housing projects so that other neighborhoods can benefit as well. Sincerely, five hundred and seventy-nine concerned citizens of Prince Rupert. Yes, in our backyard, we want, we want all of this in our backyards. Everybody, everybody wants this project in their backyard, not just on Eleventh. Until we fix the situation, put it in all our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, me again, Cody, 960 Edward Avenue. I know I already addressed everybody, I'd like to do it again. I don't know when this turned from some sort of human rights race issue into some sort of, other than the logistical construction issue, that's all it is. It's a construction logistical issue that the residents. I have nothing against having anyone in my backyard. We need building, we need housing in this town, that is for sure. But why in the worst spot possible logistically? That's, that's the question, it makes no sense. And if you wanna fight it as some sort of race logistical thing, then hey, maybe you'll find some people to argue with you. You're not gonna be able to argue that with me, I'm all for it. I'm all for housing. Everyone I've talked to is all for housing. Who doesn't deserve the right to live in a home? But why put it in a hole? Why put it in a swamp? Why put it on a hill that has blind corners and around children? Just makes no sense. And I know I share that with a lot more than five hundred and some odd signatures that you have. Okay, so this is not a race war, this is not a human rights issue. This is a logistical construction problem that should be at face value. Okay, there's gonna be a lot of bleeding hearts on this. It's a logistical construction problem. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome, just a reminder to say your name and your address.
Sounds good. My name is Maria Bunkowski and I live at 1012 Edward Avenue. I think the reason I wanted to come up here today is I, I can, I can see both sides of this, I think, for everybody. I am a mental health and addictions nurse, one of the only ones here in town. And so my job every day is to work with, you know, marginalized disenfranchised population. I can see how desperately in this city we need housing. There's just, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, we need it. I am constantly sending people to Paul and to Arnie to try and help them get housing. It can't be denied. And at the same time, for me, there are some, some, some safety concerns about this housing. My number one concern would definitely be that traffic piece. I would like to see that addressed in some way other than just a stop sign. I'm not sure if there's ever been any kind of discussion about like potentially connecting the backside of this over to, to Prince Rupert Boulevard to kind of mitigate some of that traffic off of Eleventh. I don't know if that's a possibility, but it is just something that popped into my head as far as not having all of the congestion at the top of the blind hill. You know, I can, I can agree with what some of the residents around the area have said that it is a very dangerous hill. Another concern would be that bus stop, which is over, across the street from where the proposed building is, is going to go. That bus stop was recently taken out by a drunk driver within the last two weeks because like they said, people barrel down Eleventh at like, you know, insane speeds. And so, you know, had this building been up already, you would probably have a large congregation of people at this bus stop that potentially could have been taken out too. The vehicle ended up in one of the front yards of the residence in Eleventh Avenue East. So, you know, being that we're gonna have seventy units in this building, I wonder if there's been any consideration to moving that bus stop? And if it could potentially maybe be moved across the street and even into that front area entry of the complex so that the majority of people who are accessing it don't have to cross this busy, this busy street? The other concern, I think for me too, is the, the tree barrier. So from the beginning, we were always told as residents on, of Edward and the neighborhood that there would be a tree barrier. But when I went to the open house piece over Zoom, we were told, no, the, the tree barrier wasn't gonna be there. They were going to cut it down and they were going to plant trees instead. And that the only part of, that would be actually left would be at the very bottom of the dip where the property isn't actually part of the leased land. And so when I look at the rendering up there, I do see a tree barrier. I think it looks beautiful, I think the building looks great. I'm happy to hear as a resident of Edward Avenue that it isn't six stories in the sky, you know. I, I, I definitely appreciate that, but I, you know, for me, like the architect was saying, you know, she lived in North Vancouver, it is lovely to be able to look out of your window and see trees, right? Not just for us on Edward Avenue and other residents of the area, but for the new residents who will be moving into this area as well, right? It is not meant from, in my perspective, to be, you know, let's make this the line for those people and us people or anything along those lines. I mean, like I said, these are, these are the population, many of which I work with every single day. And so, you know, I recognize the need as a mother. It kills me to think about three, four, or five families sometimes in a single residence. You know, like my hope honestly is that, you know, this does get built, but it's done properly. It's done with a lot of consideration to the location, which no, I don't agree is the greatest. And not because of a, it's in my backyard thing, but because of those safety issues that I've talked about. So, you know, if this building does come to fruition, and I do believe it probably will, I really hope that some of those, those safety concerns get addressed. I think that's important for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Bill Shepherd, 309 PRB. People talk about traffic and safety concerns. I've been on the Boulevard for a while. I would like to ask a question. Can we, or for my personal information, can I ask the question? Looking at drunken rec records from the RCMP, can I get a comparison of Prince Rupert Boulevard as opposed to Eleventh Avenue? You wanna talk about wrecks and drunken wrecks and speeding? The Boulevard is, you know, come hang out at my house for a couple nights on the weekend. Okay, enough of that. I work for Lakelamps Band as their Fisheries Resource Manager. And just to put kind of people's minds around the, the number of households that we reach out to through our Food Fish Program. We just completed a most successful food fish program in about ten years since I've been working for, for the band. And, you know, we're over, I don't have the exact number right in front of me, but we're over six hundred and fifty households that we reach out to. Good majority of those are elders and. Um, a good majority of those are elders and, um, and what we see is, you know, we, we have members that, you know, they have, it's not fair, I guess what I'm getting at, is it's not fair for most of the households that receive twenty pieces when they have multiple families all sharing the same household. We have a lot of people that are crammed in. Uh, I'm married to a Lakelands woman, and I have five band members that I supported as kids. And, uh, you know, we're all in the same house. My kids all work. All my oldest kids work. My young, my, my younger, well, my second oldest boy just graduated this year. They all work and they can't find a place to rent in this town. People say the location, well, and other locations, well, all the other locations need a project like this too. You know, there's not enough housing in Prince Rupert. I've been here and I, you know, I'm, I'm a good citizen and, uh, I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome. And your name and your address as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Angela Green, ninety-three Robinson Road, Lakelands. I just wanted to thank everybody for being here at the open forum this evening. And, uh, if it's, um, anything we're talking about housing, but I just wanted to kind of maybe, um, a little bit of my opinion, maybe your panel can one time go back and talk about the problems with speeding and trafficking. Seems like that's on the radar. As, a- a- as a mother, we all share this, that we wonder how our children can afford housing today as we did. Back then, it was so much easier. There are accommodations BC Housing had put up in this community, but also took down. So we live in, they, everybody lives in Prince Rupert. But you also see the rent eviction that's happening in your community. They're telling people, come rent my house. It's not up to par. It's high, and they expect people to live in these places. And that's what's happening. We can't turn a blind eye to people that need a place to live. Dignity. It's dignity. These are people living in your community. And there are people that are taking advantage of other people as well. They're buying up property. They don't keep up the property and expect people to live in these properties. I challenge you. Go into somebody's home. See what their living condition is, and they're told, move out. We're, we're going to renovate. They're not, they're not affordable housing. They're housing that nobody can live in. But Prince Rupert expects people to live in these homes. There's an opportunity. And I hope there is several more opportunities because it's not just Lakelands that are looking for affordable housing just to live in Prince Rupert. My God, we don't live in Vancouver, but people are expected to pay the high end of Vancouver with not proper housing, not proper living housing. These are people in your community. You come to Lakelands. I don't, I would never expect you to live that way. We were not raised to live that way. We don't want to live that way. But my kids can't afford housing, not the way that we could. So you're, I'll tell you one thing, if you live in a high-end home, congratulations. You worked hard for it. But there are other people that are coming up in this world that need affordable place to live. This is your town. This is your responsibility to help people, right? Right? That's why you're here, to help everybody. Doesn't matter where they came from. It's our responsibility to look after people. It's a human right how they live. Let them live. Let them live in this community. Let this community be one. Enough. Enough of treating people like they don't belong here. They're not good enough. You're good enough. You had an opportunity. Let's give back to the people. Let them have an opportunity. And this housing is an opportunity. So, my opinion, have a meeting about your traffic and get that, you know, that's valid. But we're all here to support one another. And I love Prince Rupert. But Prince Rupert is a really hard place to live right now, and it shouldn't be. I thank you for your time. I thank you that I could see your faces because I matter, and so do you. And your kids matter. We all matter. Give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And just a reminder, say your name and your address, please.
My name is Christina Gray, G R A Y, and Christina with a C and an H. I came here today because this is the first time I've ever come to speak at a public hearing or any city process. I'm very familiar with the law. Uh, I'm a lawyer. I work at a, a firm in Vancouver and Victoria called JFK Law Corporation. Every day I read and write the law. But it's not every day that I get to hear from people who live in the same community that I do. People whose voices matter, people who have voices, who can come up here and speak from the heart, which is really important for me to hear today. And I live at three two four Eighth Avenue West. I bought a house last year because I'm a lawyer. That affords me extreme privilege in this society. People listen to me when I come up and speak. Not everyone has that opportunity and privilege. And I'd like to say that I didn't have that opportunity as well. Growing up, I grew up in East Vancouver in a housing co-op, very similar to what is being proposed here today. And I think that's really important to take into consideration as we've heard from others who have spoken, who had similar experiences, that afforded them the right to live in a house that's safe perhaps, just in a house. Having a house is the most important part of living. Having somewhere where you can go and put your things every single day, having a bed hopefully. I don't need to belabor that point, but I think it's really important to take into consideration as well the gendered perspective of women and LGBTQ, two-spirited people and trans people as well who face multiple marginalizations in our society. Those are the people that I hope live in a housing project like this. And as we are all aware of the very difficult circumstances that Indigenous women live in and the violence that Indigenous women have faced. And this is only, has been multiplied during the pandemic, in my opinion. And there's been, um, multiple inquiries such as the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women's Inquiry, the Opal Inquiry. And Prince Rupert has a highway going through it. So I think that's important to take into consideration when you're making this deliberation, is how women are disproportionately affected by lack of housing and multiple different barriers, um, that are systemic. So I'd, you know, I didn't come up here to talk about Aboriginal rights or the fact that we're on unceded Tsul'ah' territory, which I think goes without saying. And I agree with everything that people have said in this regard prior to me speaking. I'd just like you to take into also consideration the gendered perspective of women, trans, two-spirit, and LGBTQ people as well. I think, from what I've heard from others that oppose this, is that the issue isn't that they oppose the housing project per se, but that there are other issues at play around the feasibility of where it's located and the road issues, which I think can be mitigated as well through having like a traffic circle, um, that would calm traffic in the area. These issues are beside the point. They're ancillary to the issue. The real issue is that we all need housing, and I don't think anyone here really disputes that issue. But it sounds like from my perspective that there is not enough, um, traffic calming in the area, that there's other issues at play. And so I hope that you take those perspectives into consideration as well in making a decision in favor of this housing development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Linda Gray, Diwau, Lakelands, Diwa Watzku, Hein, Ada, Chatmas, Diwa Tzogu, Tsul'ah' Nuyu. I'd like to welcome council to Tsul'ah' Lachup, to Tsul'ah' Territory. Um, as you've heard, it's unceded territory. Um, I see both sides of this issue. I'm absolutely in favor of this project. I don't think that this is the best site for it, but for whatever reason, um, it's, this is where it's going to be. And I understand that there are lots of empty, um, school sites, but those are provincial sites. So I'm sure that Lakelands has tried to get the province to do it, and they're dragging their heels as usual, and they're trying to make the city do it. And this is the opportunity to, if that's what Lakelands wants, is a different site that's more, that's better for, for it. I was in a part of those discussions, maybe this is the best site according to what the needs of the community are. Um, and I think that many of the things that need to be, like you could have a four-way stop, you could have a traffic circle, you could have two entrances to the, um, to the building. You need a bus stop right outside that's safe for especially kids who are going to be going up to Conrad School and over to Charles Hayes or to Hein Elementary. You need it to be safe for them, so there definitely needs to be a four-way stop there. There needs to be four-way stops and all along, um, Prince Rupert Boulevard and East 11th and Sixth Avenue. There's, you know, it's a problem everywhere. And I went to the, um, the Zoom meeting on this, and one of my biggest concerns, which I'm sure the band has taken into consideration, is the environmental concerns. So it's one thing for the band to say, yes, we want this done, but who's going to be watching to make sure that's done? Who's going to be protecting that stream? Like, who's going to be the overseers who do that work to make sure that when somebody accidentally dumps a, a bear, a bucket of dirt in the stream, someone's going to clean it up right away? Because Lakelands, it's not their responsibility to be standing there watching this stuff. Um, so whoever provides those permits. One of the things that I would suggest to Lakelands is, I've been a part of different affordable housing projects, is that sixty years is not the best that they can do with a lease. They could do ninety-nine years if they want to, the city or the province. And you could also ask for a first right of refusal after sixty years to redevelop that site if it's needed. So to really show how, how committed you are to ensuring that Lakelands people are a continual part of this community, need to stretch a little bit farther than sixty years. And we did it with the City of Vancouver when I was living down there. And so if City of Vancouver, if we could get them to do it, we know that the City of Prince Rupert can do it. Um, then the other thing is like people keep talking about affordable housing. And any kind of affordable housing that comes out of BC Housing is not what we, I would consider a one-bedroom suite for three hundred bucks to be affordable or four hundred bucks. But these are probably going to be like eight hundred dollars or whatever it's going to be. Like a lot of those elders that moved into the elders lodge, it's called affordable housing, but it's not all that affordable. And to talk about somebody else's concern about it only being for Lakelands members, well, I agree that every single one, there should be buildings like this all over this city because it's needed. And there's always, this happens to be a certain pot of money that the band applied for, that it's for this specific purpose, so there's no use in debating about that. And all of, it's not like everybody's going to come off of Lakelands and come and take up these units, and they're still going to be, um, a problem. It's going to be people who are moving out of units within Prince Rupert into this building and freeing up that space for other people, so. I'm sure there was something else I was going to say. But, oh, sorry, this is, that's my niece Christina. And like we're, I own a house here too, like I'm of the very privileged few who got in while it was still affordable. And I live within about six blocks of this place, I think. So ten oh, and I should say this, like in terms of the Privacy Act and safety, especially for women, like young women such as my niece, for us to have to say our addresses publicly in a forum like this with maybe somebody who's a stalker, maybe somebody who's an ex-husband, maybe who's somebody's, like you should have an opportunity for us to walk up there and write our address down. Um, so I'm willing to do that after I'm finished speaking, if you'd like. But again, my name is Linda Gray, and I am fully in support of this project, wherever the Lakelands decides that it should be. And they're, I'm sure they're going to negotiate as best they can to get a site, so. To exit Newsom.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please. Welcome. Just your name and your address, please.
Chris Daniele, nine ten Eleventh Avenue East. Uh, this will be literally in my backyard. Um, I built a house with my bare hands, no contractors, no other people. Uh, the reason I did it that way is because, uh, I do work, I work hard, but I can't afford to build a house with, uh, other people. Uh, my house currently is not quite finished, but I cannot get final occupancy in it because it's a two-story house with a steep roof line. I can't get final occupancy because that does not meet Rupert code. Uh, and now we're going to build a six-story building without any kind of issue. The reason that I couldn't get my occupancy is because of, uh, view, excuse me, because of the view, I was blocking other people's view with my roof line. So now we've got a six-story building going in. Uh, all that aside, I absolutely think we need housing. Not for a second am I going to dispute that. I don't think anybody in Prince Rupert would dispute that. With that money that Lakelands has, I, I, and again, building my own house from scratch, that money could be far well better spent on a more developed area. That seventy-unit building could easily become a hundred-unit building if you're not spending that kind of money in that kind of muskeg, that, basically just that terrain. I have a feeling it's going to get built regardless. I just think that the money could be better spent on another area and actually have a bigger facility for more accommodations, helping more people in the community. I, it, by the sounds of it, it's not going to be completely full of Lakelands members, and there's going to be more available. So if we have a bigger building, we can help more people. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Your name and address, please.
Sure. Uh, James Daniele, nine thirty Eleventh East. I can't believe he talks still. Um, that was my brother. So beside his house is, uh, is my house, and I've been building that for nine years as well. So, uh, I just want to be clear on this, like- Like, tonight we're talking about zoning and the proposal for this construction in our neighborhood. And, you know, I don't, again, you know, everybody's been saying it, and I'll say it too. Everybody needs a place to live. No question. No question, right? We are, you know, from the public notice that the City of Prince Rupert put out, it's for persons who deem themselves affected. And I feel that with my address in the proximity of this construction, that puts me at, you know, one of the forefront, if you will. So far, with, you know, my wife and I, we've been doing a lot of research on it, as have, you know, everyone else here. And, you know, we've been told that $35,000 is an annual income to stay in one of these places that is to be built. We've heard that it's Lakualams members only. And we've heard that band members can move here now to get porch jobs. We've heard that zero income is okay. And we've also now heard that it's senior housing. And just tonight, we heard it's 12 units, and it's also eight units. So I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know what it is. We don't really know. Like, I have a better understanding now, but, you know, even the renderings and the drawings, like, we don't really have an architectural drawing. We don't have dimensions. We know it's going to be six stories tall. And I think we got, you know, in meters how tall that was going to be. But really, that's all I know. So I believe that we're being told whatever is most palatable. And, you know, I'm not really sold. I'm not really comfortable with what, you know, is to be voted on at this point. But again, we are talking about zoning. So when I built my house, and he lied about the two hands. I helped him, and he's helping me. So anyway, I had to do two separate variance applications for it. One was because the porch roof was too close to 11th Avenue, the curbside. And the second was because I wanted my shop in the back of my house, which is going to be where my wife wants me all the time, attached to the house. And I had to have two separate variance permits, an application done for them through council, and it was put through a public hearing. Letters went out to the neighborhood. I think it was, I think it was 100-meter radius. We were told that this proposed construction was going to be a 200-meter radius, and that those letters were going to be distributed. From what I understand, they have not yet been mailed. And yet, I think the vote is happening tonight on this. So, you know, again, a little bit of confusion for me, and definitely makes me feel like something is kind of being pushed through here, where I had to follow the rules. I would assume that, you know, everything should be consistent with that. So, you know, I don't believe that, although, you know, I hate to say it because, you know, just what everyone else says here. I can't argue it. I really can't. But I have to look after what I'm interested in and my needs, if you will. I don't believe that this is going to benefit the neighborhood. I think it is going to benefit people. But is it going to improve my situation? I don't think so. You know, when we're talking about that many people, I'm guessing, you know, we don't even know a cap. 300 people, I think, would be safe. I could easily see it being more. You know, noise-wise and stuff, I think that that's going to be something that will happen at all hours of the day and night. I think that it's going to impact me. I'm not going to, I think we can all easily say, nobody wants to live beside a rental house. Nobody. You just never know who's going to live next to you. You don't know. Right? We're not talking about a rental house anymore. We're talking about a six-story complex. With all this, if, you know, it comes, I'm curious what's going to happen with my taxes. I don't, I don't think that my house is going to go up in value to the point where it's going to be positively impacted by this construction. I think that property values in general are going up, but I don't believe that my house being situated next to this is going to increase the value. I'd like to know if there's going to be any consideration made for the possible, when I go to sell this thing in 30 years, if this house, or pardon me, this complex is not maintained. Now I'm living next to something that is a problem, and it's going to affect me personally, financially. That's coming out of my pocket. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not saying that is going to be the case, but is there consideration for that? That's what I got. Guys, thank you very much for listening. I really appreciate that we did this in public, not on the computer and all that. Thanks for giving me the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kelsey Daniele. I live at 910 11th Avenue East, four doors down from the proposed site. I agree with many in this room that there is a tremendous need in our community for housing. I see it every day in my work. I grew up living in B.C. housing homes over the years. I have lived with family for years, bringing home my two children while we built our home. I respect the tremendous amount of work done by everyone already on this project, trying to come up with a solution for our community. Though I do not feel this is the most ideal site, I'm also not against housing in this area. Perhaps a little bit of divisiveness within my own neighbors. I, however, do not support six stories, especially with a variance going in for it. As my husband spoke, we are two stories above ground, and we cannot get a final permit for our home. Prince Rupert is a beautiful community with many areas that could be considered for second or even third sites. I would much rather see smaller units in more locations with options for these residents to transition from low income to permanent housing within even the same home. I live directly near this site. My kitchen, my dining room, and bedrooms will look directly at all six stories. We are on the same side, sorry, of the proposed building with no trees. It's 150 meters back, which is exactly where my fence line sits, where my kids play in my backyard. There are no trees. And as mentioned, they plan on taking the trees down from the front, something that will take many years to regrow. Not once during this process has the city delivered a variance package or contacted my family to seek our perspective. I found out about tonight's meeting on Facebook. My home, as well as many others, will lose daylight, view of the mountain, and much of our privacy. Agreed? This is a privilege. But also, for those living in the back of that home, three stories below ground level, I question what their daylight will be. What it is like to live in Prince Rupert with no sun? With very little, sorry, just, it is not, when you are in the back of that gully, it is dark, and it is wet, and it is marshy. I too have questions around the sewer system that's going in, with it being three stories below. Will it be macerated? Will it be pumped? What is the plan for that? I know that in our basement, we cannot have sewage without anything pumping it up on that street. Should this large building move forward, I myself will mourn the loss of the greenbelt that is home to some of the most beautiful species of plants and animals. I will be saddened to know that this project did not go through a transparent and open process, allowing for open dialogue until tonight. I don't believe that the city, nor anybody, has been transparent with the neighbors in that neighborhood. Even my closest neighbors did not know tonight was happening. It seems up to this point that the rules have not been the same for this project as for others wishing to build homes in Rupert. I hope that this changes and that in some way, we can come to a point where this land is used to meet the needs of our community and is welcomed by the neighborhood and is part of the natural landscape as there. Just a couple of comments I wanted to say about the building. The 70 units, the six stories in a residential area. I counted the homes between Alfred Street and McDonald's. There's 68 homes, not including the cul-de-sacs. Soon Digby Towers, I would expect, to be done, adding traffic. You're doubling the traffic on that street with that complex alone. Has the city considered how busy that will be? My 11-year-old daughter, I still watch her cross the street on 11th at that very site because of the speed and the poor visibility with cars parked on the street. Many mornings, I pull out of my home, and I don't know what's coming over that hill. And I hope that they are going the speed limit. We too have had a car end up in our yard because of poor visibility, speed, those number of things that have already been addressed. Discrepancies that I'd like clarified with Lakualam, B.C. Housing, the city, mentioned in the meeting way back when at the public hearing from Harvey, was that this housing was for band members coming to Rupert for work at Pembina, the port, and other employees. However, it was also said that this was for low-income band members. If they are coming here for work, what will be in place to support them when they no longer meet that $30,000 threshold? When they're $35,000 or $40,000 and need more housing? Where will they go? What will they do? If this is for Lakualam members only, do the accessible units sit empty? What if there are other people in our communities who need those wheelchair-accessible units that I feel are so valuable and so needed, not only for your band members, but for our community? As well, if the idea is to have multi-generational units, what happens when one of those generations no longer meets the low-income threshold? Is the whole family expected to relocate in those conjoined units? Again, those are my questions, my concerns. I'm not against housing in that area, but I am against the variance for six stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michelle Bryant, again. I just wanted to mention, it's great that we live in a democracy where we have freedom of speech, and we can speak on behalf of what concerns us and what affects us. There's a very large population that is not here tonight, the potential tenants of this unit. So I would like council to recognize that, from their perspective, they are not here today because that unit is not built. Wherever it's going to be built, their voices need to be heard and considered as well, from their point of view. Having to move, live in multi-generational houses, having to move from place to place to place, having to potentially live on the street. So it's great that the residents around this building are all here tonight, but the people who would potentially live in this building are not. So please keep in mind their perspective when you're making your decisions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lee Brain and council. Harvey Russell, 241 Crestview Drive. My traditional name is Legiskigia with the Gipulgiots tribe. It means black fish float across of the Ghanata clan. I am a house leader for, one of the house leaders for the Gipulgiots. I also hold a name, Gesiya Kibau, of the Lakibu clan. I am elected member to council. And thanks to Mayor Reese, he assigned me the housing portfolio. And last term, we talked about this. Our government of the day, we were successful in lobbying the Liberal Government to get into talks for urban housing for Lakualams band members. And the election comes up. NDP came in. They followed up with that. And working in conjunction with B.C. Housing, City of Prince Rupert, and a well-put-together housing team, Lakualams was very fortunate to get this far. We have over 1,400 band members residing in the great community of Lakien. For you to come to us, that's Prince Rupert. This is our territory. We want what's best for our members. We want affordable housing for our band members. We want them to have the opportunity in the future, should they be fortunate enough to get career jobs that would afford them the ability to save and purchase a house here in Prince Rupert. 20 years ago, a house would probably cost you in the neighborhood about $180,000, depending on the neighborhood. You go, the young people now, if they want to buy a house, good luck. Who would have thought we would see million-dollar houses even up in Graham Avenue? Who would ever thought we would see a $795,000 house in the District of Portet? 20 years ago, that was unthinkable. Now, fast forward to 2021. The cost of housing, that's just to try and buy a house, even for the port worker. Our people are coming in from the village if they're lucky enough to get a port application. We have band members, the same as everybody else here in Prince Rupert, that have a family member that is a union member, receive an application for the port. The odds of them getting hired is still against them. But once they get in, they get one day, two days here, here and there. And it takes several years before they get into the union where they're, where they now can say to the call-up, no, I don't want to come in. I've already worked six days. No, I don't want to come in on the seventh day. What Lakualams is going to do is see this project proceed. 70 units, roughly 300 people, live in a brand-new facility that will be affordable. We are working with the City of Prince Rupert towards their 2030 vision by building an apartment complex. One of many, I bet you, that will get built here in Prince Rupert. You heard Mayor Brain. That's the unveiling. A lot more housing units will be built because that is what's needed. In order for this community to be successful, we need affordable housing. That's affordable housing for everyone. Unfortunately, we live on an island. You talk about location. Our teams looked at various sites throughout Prince Rupert. Unfortunately, the ground was not suitable to build a complex of this size. Shale rock. No rock. This is Prince Rupert. We're on a muskeg. You talk about traffic. Well, that's for the highways and the cities to work out. But I'm sure they all took notes. They will bring it up. Hopefully, we come to a positive resolution for everybody that satisfies everybody. More likely not satisfy everybody, but it may be the best compromise possible. And that's what they're going to work for. Talk about traffic, bus route. When we first chose, we had to settle on this site because the others were unsuitable. We talked about the positives on this site. A bus stop, you look at that tree area there. That'd be a nice place for a bus stop. I've driven up and down 11th Avenue. I have a daughter who owns a house on 11th Avenue. I've gone there every day. I didn't encounter speeding traffic. I didn't encounter heavy traffic. I'm retired. I have eight hours a day I can travel during working hours. And I've done that. I've gone up and down the 11th Avenue. Like, Paizan, Mr. Daniele, you brought your clan out today. Good for you. Chris, James, I've known you two gentlemen since you were this high. And I'm proud of you two young gentlemen in building your home. And then there's Frankie, who raised such fine young men. And then there's Frankie, who raised such fine young men. So my hat's off to you, and I hope you get that variance. So, you know, you talk about the mountain view. You build there, we got a view, got the top of the mountain view. I don't think this project's going to impede a whole lot of mountain view. You're still going to see the top. Talked about the trees. Prince Rupert was once covered in trees. Early nineteen hundreds, they got knocked down. Buildings were put out. If I knew, if my people knew now what they should have known back then, maybe we would have said, no, I ain't, you're not going to build there. But, you know, we move ahead. This project will be good for Prince Rupert. This project will be good for Lakewalams. It is one of many that's to come, and when this is done, I'm sure you heard, well, you heard Mayor Reese, this is just the beginning. Working with the City of Prince Rupert, B.C. Housing, and the provincial governments, Lakewalams hopes to build another complex. It's just a start. We have the Nishka Nation residing here. We have the Hites to get sense. You know, everywhere in this province, every town in this province, there is native housing. They've, some of them were fortunate enough to get some monies and buy some housing, or they buy property and they get it developed. Not once have I heard any municipality say no, because they know it was good for them. You talk about the taxes. Boy, we just can't live without those taxes, can we? It's there. It will always be there. The city needs those dollars. And hopefully, with new development in Lakewam, a lot more tax dollars will come to the City of Prince Rupert. To identify all the needs and all the concerns you have in terms of safety, we all know Eleventh Avenue needs repaving once again, lighting, traffic signs. That's something the city and the department highways will work out, but I believe they will come to a wonderful compromise. Again, one that not everybody's going to be favorable, but it'll probably be the best compromise available. I am looking forward to this. Everywhere there's development, even this little town of ours, new houses are going up here and there. I'm sure other residents, you know, they have the concerns too. A house going up, trucks coming and going. You talk about value. Jesus, my house is, if anything, has gone up in value ever since I bought it. So, you know, thanks to Mayor Brain, taxes haven't gone up a whole lot, but it's there. We know it's going to come. It's going to happen. So we're going to move forward with this, hopefully with, well, with the blessing of city council and the blessing of this community, we'll make this happen. And when it happens and the celebrations happen, and when the opening, the grand opening, I hope to see a lot of you there to celebrate one of Prince Rupert's successes, because when Prince Rupert succeeds, Lakewalams succeeds. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Doikshun.
Okay, it's eight o'clock, and I'm still, there's no timeframe here, but, you know, to respect your guys' time and not to keep here too late. Are there any additional new points that anyone would like to make about this project? You can come forward now. Go ahead, and then this gentleman after.
I'd just like to touch upon the last gentleman's comments there. And where are all these other developments that got nixed because they were unusable land, and what makes this usable? Is that report available for everyone to see? Because I have a very hard time believing that this was the best spot available in a swamp. Or was it because this available spot was only one dollar? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. My name is Donald Price. I live at twelve eighty-eight Summit Avenue. I am from Lakewalams, and I'm also from Prince Rupert, and we got to live together. All I hear is people complaining, it's my backyard, it's my backyard, it's our backyard. We have to live together. I would not want any one of you to have five other of your family members living in a one-bedroom apartment and paying sixteen hundred dollars a month. So I ask you, don't look at my skin color, don't look at Lakewalams, look at Prince Rupert and have some humanity for people. I'm a firm believer that you are the company you keep. My company is my family, and I consider Prince Rupert my family, and we're good people. We should be leading the way for other communities and showing that we are one instead of we are divided. So I hope everybody comes together and has some empathy for these families that are on social assistance, that are paying twelve hundred dollars a month to see rats running across the floor. You guys don't see it. I don't see it. I used to see it when I was smaller. It happens. So I'm asking you guys to open up, open your heart, and let other people have a chance to succeed. Thank you.
Any additional speakers tonight?
Good evening. John Latimer, I live at two one five Sixth Avenue West. Just want to, people have a lot of issue with ongoing traffic, so on our street, it gets very busy during the school days, especially in the morning. So you see the traffic going down, you got the school rush, goes all the way down from Fulton, all the right way to the Prince Rupert Library by the police station, and it gets very difficult to get out of there. But what you got to do, you just got to keep following the rules, adapt, and there are some lenient people in this, there's a lot of lenient people in this city. I even do it myself, if somebody is boxed in there trying to get out, you'll see some nice people stop, they'll let you merge on, and I'm sure that'll happen on Eleventh. I see a lot of fine people here. I know they got a lot of concerns, but you just got to adapt to the changes. There's our members here from Lakewalams. We adapted to the changes. So where this proposed project is going, that's on unceded Gitland tribal territory. And if you look at, if you read on our history, our tribes, each of our nine tribes and including other tribes in the North Coast, we always built our villages near the water, streams, So this is no different for building this small little village in this town. And I also live in the complex, the buildings by the apartments by the library there. It's a multicultural building. We have elders there, Caucasian people, East Indians. We help one another. My wife and I, we have elders in that building that are non-indigenous. We became good friends with them. We help them when they need it. They have our phone numbers when they need help, and that's the kind of building this is going to be. So if they're, I'm not sure if it's band members, I'm not sure of the credentials of this building, but it's going to benefit everybody, especially the elders that move in there, because we were, as our community growing up in Lakewalams, that's how we grew up, helping. It doesn't matter if it's indigenous or non-indigenous, it's all about helping and adapting. Thank you, Mayor and council, for giving me a chance to speak. Wa-wa.
Any other speakers this evening?
Just one more quick comment here. I know you don't live on Eleventh. I do. I had a car in my front yard. That's besides the point. I find it a little bit disheartening that the arguments for building this place keep coming back to some kind of a racial decision. I can't speak for everyone. For me, it is not in any way racial. I already said I built right beside there. I know what that dirt, that dirt, I know what that muskeg is like, and I just, I cannot see how this is a feasible, financially wise decision to build it here. You guys want to build it, that's fine, but like I said earlier, you could easily get a larger, more, more housing building, more rooms, more accommodations for both wheelchair-accessible, et cetera, people in somewhere where you've got better land to start with. Like I said, it's just disheartening that it seems to keep coming back to a racial thing. I find that sad, that that seems to be the mentality, that it's some kind of struggle. It's saddening. That's not what this is about, in my view. This is purely about a construction site and to create as much housing as possible. And like I said earlier, that money could go towards a bigger facility on a better Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lloyd Quas, twelve twenty-seven Eleventh Avenue East, and I have a disagreement with the gentleman that was telling me that the traffic on Eleventh Avenue is not bad. The city just put in the sewer and water main to new, two new housing developments across the street from me. It took them two and a half to three weeks blocking the road off and trying to work with one-lane traffic going from Maverick Mart up to Conrad. Every night, from five o'clock till seven o'clock, from Maverick Mart to Conrad Street, there's cars coming out of there and trucks, and by the time they pass my house, they're hitting sixty miles an hour or better. And coming to the crest of the hill, there's parked cars on the right-hand side. About a year ago, one of the neighbors had his car parked on the right-hand side of Eleventh Avenue, across from the garage that was torn down on the left-hand side, and he got rear-ended at six o'clock in the morning, and it was the summer, it was easy enough to see. And you explained to me, I'm trying to explain to you, that nobody is controlling traffic on Eleventh Avenue East. It's the narrowest street in the city. It has parking, cars parked all over the place, and nobody has any regard for speed limits. And you're going to tell me that you're going to fix the problem at Edwards Avenue and the complex that's proposed with a two-way stop sign? What you have to do is look at widening Eleventh Avenue from the bottom of Frederick Street Hill all the way to the other side of the dip going up Eleventh and to the top of the hill on the other side of the dip. The road is way too narrow. People are not obeying the traffic signs, they're not thinking clearly. But what really irks me is nobody is there checking the speeders. And continually, from five o'clock till eight o'clock at night, those trucks and cars are roaring up the hill past my house. I have no objection to the development across the street. There's five new houses going in across the street, and I say to myself, finally, somebody's done something with the property. But again, city has an onus to us people to make sure that our streets are safe. And I want to just say one more thing. I hope all you members on council remember, if there's a fatal accident, it's on your shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers this evening?
Hi, good evening. My name is Velma Sankey, six four one Fulton Street. I'm looking at the picture you had up there. It all looks nice, sunny and everything, but the reality is, it's on Eleventh East. It's not going to be that sunny. You're surrounded by trees. I used to own a house up there, sold it, and this problem is, you're in all muskeg. You're going to see structural problems not too far down the line. I'm not too sure how you chose that property for our band to build in, but I'm not pleased with that property at all. I would suggest Westview School sits dormant, nothing happening up there. That is the solution to your problem. And then you'll get everybody that's against you maybe jump on board and be against that as well. Just a solution, Westview School. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening?
We have someone on the Zoom that would like to speak. Do you want to know if you could unmute them, sorry?
Sure, we'll do the Zoom first, is that okay? Yeah.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Say your name and your address, please.
Thank you. So my name is Mustafa Kalkan. I'm the project manager of Lakewalams WAP Housing Society. Want to give a bit of context to the funding and answer some of the questions that were brought up tonight. But first of all, I do appreciate the respectful dialogue that's been had today and the opportunity for everybody to voice their opinions and concerns and positive views. I also want to thank city council and the Lakewalams council members and Mayor Reese that are in attendance today, and also members of the and also a member of our team Heidi, who had a presentation for you earlier. So a little bit about this funding, it's 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 funded by the Indigenous Housing Fund. In 2018, the society, and I'm talking about WAP Housing Society or otherwise known as the developer, applied to BC Housing through an application process. BC Housing, one of the criteria was you had to be a housing provider. So you had to be a First Nations, the Métis Nation of B.C., a nonprofit or for-profit developer who wished to partner with Indigenous housing providers in First Nations. So with the blessing from council, the society applied to BC Housing. BC Housing granted funds to the society. And and one of the conditions of that funding was you had to bring in some equity. And that equity comes in the form of land, could be cash, it could be, you know, development waivers and things like that. Through the partnership and negotiations with the city principal, we were able to, or had the opportunity to secure a site through a long-term lease that enabled us to bring that equity to BC Housing. And BC Housing could then secure their covenants. We could secure an operating agreement and some funding to build this project and make make this happen. So we've been working on this since 2019. We've we've really, 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 really hard. We're aware there are some technical challenges with the site. But we've got traffic consultants, biologists, environmental and geotechnical people who are assisting us. They're all actually out of the Rupert Office and Mackelany, who I'm sure are some of your friends and colleagues and and neighbors. We've got people from Vancouver who are looking at the mechanical, the structural and the architectural components. And then, of course, you've got BC Housing, who's providing the funding. Subject to BC Housing approval, we 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 are required to meet certain certain, you know, criteria. We need to first meet the design standards and construction guidelines. We need to meet their operational requirements and we need to provide affordable rents. And those rents come in the form of what they call rent geared to income. There were some questions about the income levels and things like that. Just please be aware that this is for for rent geared to income and rent geared to income is generally thirty percent of your income, no more than thirty percent of your income would go towards houses. As for the sites, we looked at two or three different sites. I can tell you, one of the sites was located near Frederick and Hayes Cove, near Conrad Elementary. There's an existing BC housing development there, I believe. Unfortunately, that site was just not suitable for this development. We also looked at the site near Charles Hayes. Fortunately, again, that site was not suitable because it backed up to a hydro substation. So we were very limited. You know, we don't, the funding doesn't allow us to buy property. We had to come in with land. And please be aware, there's eleven hundred of these units being funded across B.C. So this project is providing seventy units of the eleven hundred units across B.C. We're not the only Indigenous housing provider out there. There are projects like this happening all across B.C. and in 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 the lower mainland where I live. Please be aware of the sites, where the site is currently located, that if you look at the city map or if you even go on the on the parcel map that's available online, you'll see that these are all, the lot, the lot we're located on is made up of single-family lots. I believe there is more than fifty lots there. We are not in the park space. We may be adjacent to a lot or a city-owned property that's rezoned for parks. But we are not building on the parklands. So just want to make that clear. All the site development costs will be paid by us. When the when the value of the the building and the properties, you know, determined and all that, we will be we will be paying for the property taxes. We'll pay in full annually. We did not have the option to purchase any schools. Okay, those are not, to my understanding, those are not owned by the city. They are the school district and and or the province. So we did not have that option. It would have been a nice option because we would prefer a flat site. But we did not ever have negotiations and or look at that. Okay? So the twelve units of affordable housing for seniors, that will be secured through a Section 219 covenant that will be registered on title. Okay? Yes, we are leasing the property for sixty years, but that sixty years allows us to secure the funding that we need to build this. Okay? BC Housing also secures their funding through a restrictive covenant that that basically allows us to make, allows BC Housing to maintain affordability levels in this project. I think some of you did not receive the mail-out, so I apologize for that. I know that the tenants of the Oasis Apartments unfortunately did not receive the mail-out. I think building management there didn't want to distribute it. So we apologize to you and others who have not received it, but we did. We went to great lengths to get the mailing addresses and and set up that Zoom call with you earlier in the year. I think right now, there are some questions about the height, floor plans and things like that. And I hope that there will be another opportunity to showcase the project. It is a really beautiful impactful project. And please be aware that the funding is coming from the Indigenous Housing Fund. So there are some of you concerned about why it's Indigenous-only. You know, we we decided collectively to apply for the funding and we were successful. There's other funding out there for non-Indigenous groups. I encourage everybody to apply. We want this to kickstart, hopefully, you know, bigger and better things for the city and to encourage others to to build affordable housing. So that's it for us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you still want to say something? Go ahead.
Hello?
There we go.
My name is Sheri Malthes, 1032 Edward Avenue. I can't really say whether I'm for or against the project, but I have concerns with the number of approximately three hundred people being, population density being integrated. I know when I was reading the traffic study, it said that there was a recommendation of making a twenty-meter no-parking zone on either side of 11th. I'm not sure if that's going to fix the problem of that corner on Edward Avenue being blind or not. Sometimes there are no cars parked there. It's still, it's still a blind zone. The other thing that I was reading was that there were other issues brought up in the traffic study that weren't necessarily in conjunction with the development, but that were brought up to the city. And I'm just wondering what those were and if adding three hundred people to the area would make that, make those recommend, issues any worse? And the other thing is with with like a new build in like a bigger center, there would possibly be a waste management system integrated into the building for trash, recycling, stuff like that. I'm wondering what the plan is for this build because three hundred people and a couple of dumpsters outside is probably not enough. So that's my issues.
Thank you very much.
I hope this doesn't fall again. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? So maybe I'll just say something actually for a second here. So I'm hearing a lot of questions here this evening. And I have to thank everybody for actually a very respectful dialogue this evening. I'm actually very proud of the conversation that's happened tonight because I think it's important that we're making decisions and, you know, we're not tearing each other down when we're trying to make those decisions. And I'm not going to close the mics or anything, but I am going to propose a solution for this evening because I do want to alleviate anxiety on both sides. Because I I do want to make sure that we're making a good decision that's going to be the right compromise, if that's what council ends up doing. The challenge that we have tonight is that if I adjourn this public hearing this evening, legally, I will not be able to speak to the public about this project after this public hearing has adjourned. So I will, legally, council has to take your opinions this evening. If we adjourn this public hearing, we no longer have the ability to have a conversation. And on tonight's agenda is only third reading for this project, and then there would be based on traffic studies and things like that, and then a final approval after that. What I would suggest for this evening is actually that we postpone the adjournment of this public hearing based on a report from our planning department that will answer the questions that have brought, been brought forward. Because I think there are probably too many questions, and as Mustafa has mentioned, he'd still like an opportunity maybe to have some more information out there. And I think that's fair. I think it's fair that people have more information for this and that the questions that I have all over the place here need to be answered. And so what would happen then if I postponed the adjournment of this, we would resume it at our next council meeting with a report, with the questions answered, and then from that point, we would move the process forward. So that's what I would entertain tonight for council, because I feel that technically speaking, we have a lack of information. And Mr. Buckin, do you think that would be a prudent decision for council to make this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I think that we can send notices out again when we're ready, so everybody has them. So I'd recommend actually just closing this and we'll send out new notices.
Because there are questions around, you know, the traffic and the safety issues. You know, I'm hearing all sides of this issue. You know, council knows there's housing needed as well. I I do want to speak briefly to the process, just because I am hearing that some folks feel that there's a a process issue here. But this process has been exactly to where the local government act requires us under the law to, through the engagement process. So nothing around that is at all off. That's exactly where it's supposed to be. In terms of the city's partnership, the city, we have a policy where we will partner with any B.C. housing projects for one dollar. We did that with the Crow's Nest Lodge on on the highway. That was a dollar lease for B.C. Housing to build a shelter. It doesn't matter what site is located. If it's a B.C. housing project for affordable housing, we will partner for a dollar lease. That is our policy. And that is to help drive costs down on any affordable projects, housing projects, regardless of who's proposing them specifically for B.C. Housing, because we're two government agencies that work together. Other than that, that's, and that's why this site was located, was because that was the site that the city had available that had access for a site like this, as Mustafa has mentioned. We don't go around telling them what sites they should have. We say, these are what we have available, and they're selected on that merit. So there's no, there's no other way around that other than that. Once that happens, we enter into a public process. The city is not proposing this project. The Lakelands Housing Society is proposing the project in partnership with B.C. Housing. Our job as land regulators is to ensure we hear all the voices around that. Anyone in this town is allowed to propose any project at any location, and they're allowed to make an application for changing the zoning at any place. Our job is to ensure there's a fair process. Technical challenges are being heard. Various ministries are being involved. The public has a chance to have their say. And then after a public hearing, we collect all of the data and then council makes a decision. Tonight, I've been through many public hearings in the last eight years of being the mayor of this community. And I can usually sense if we have some consensus around whether or not we have enough information. And tonight, I'm not hearing enough information in terms of some specific questions that I think still need to be answered. So that's why I would recommend council this evening, that we would postpone the adjournment of the public hearing, which means the public hearing is theoretically still ongoing. Until we get a report from our planning department that answers the questions that we have written down this evening, and then we will notify you when we will resume that public hearing. And then we will move forward with the decision-making process after that. Now, that being said, I don't want to close the public hearing this evening, but it is also, you know, eight-thirty and you all have families. And I don't want you walking away here feeling like you're, the anxiety. So I think that might be a fair approach to get the information you need. And, but if you still want to speak this evening in this public hearing, I'm still going to keep the mics over until people feel like they've had a chance to say all the things they want to say. So I won't adjourn, I won't postpone for now, but I will allow more speakers to come forward and you can continue the public hearing process. But there will also be another chance to say some things at the next, if council goes that direction.
Hi, it's me again, Arnie Nagy. You got my address already. Actually, I just wanted to bring up this one point that was raised tonight as a serious issue for a fellow homeowner who can't move into his house, that I think is part of, in the spirit of cooperation and and getting support on this, I think council really has to take a good, hard look at getting that variance so this gentleman and his wife and his family can move into that house. I've seen enough variances in this community. My neighbors included on worked out on houses that were just barely out or out a little bit. If there's not a problem with his neighbors, why should there be a problem with with the the city undoing it? I'm pretty sure that the community, his neighbors won't have a problem, you know, with the city issue and that variance, so these guys can move in. And I think that's an important issue that's raised. It's a it's a house. That's what they built. And I think we have to have that recognition and respect for what he was trying to do and get that issue settled before, you know, I mean, that's his livelihood he put in there. And I think we have to recognize that fact. And I hope that council and the permit department, bylaws and the rest of the bureaucracy can understand that fact and get that issue settled for that family.
Thank you. Actually, that is the first I had heard of that. And please contact our planning department and we'd like to take a look at that issue for you guys. I hadn't heard that there's an issue there, so we can, we can move that forward and figure out what's going on with that. Now, based on what I said, is there other speakers that would like to say a few words? Or does everybody feel comfortable that all the questions and concerns have been raised and that we have some answers that we need to bring back to the public, which we will collect in a report, we'll work with the proponent and our planning department to make sure we address a lot of these questions, because, you know, I actually don't have answers to them. And we could push this into the regular meeting and have them answered there. However, given what I'm feeling this evening, I think it's prudent that we just postpone the adjournment of this public hearing and resume it with those answers present, so that everybody feels comfortable about this project. Because, you know, I'm hearing speakers talking about finding good compromise. And I think that's important that we make sure that everybody's feeling good about this, because if if this is something that ends up becoming successful, it needs to be something that's successful that everybody feels proud of. And, you know, we're committed to making sure we're hearing everybody's voices on that, no matter what it is in this community. So that would be probably at our next council meeting in September, that report, and we'll make sure that it would be pushed off to that. So if there's no other speakers, I'll just wait for a moment here. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak to this topic or our approach on this? Okay, so seeing okay, so seeing no other, no other speakers coming forward, I would entertain a motion to postpone the adjournment of the public hearing for pending a report from our planning department. Moved by Counsel Cunnam, second by Counsel Adie. Anybody opposed? Yeah, go ahead.
I hate to put him on the spot, but I'm I'm wondering if I can just get our city manager to just clarify the procedure for you, or maybe it's a question, better question for Mr. Buckin, who's on, who's on stage.
Sorry, through the mayor, what what procedure do you want to clarify?
Just exactly the procedure of of postponing the public hearing. So the idea is that the public hearing then is not adjourned. It stays open. We can continue to get feedback. We'll resume the public hearing at our next regular, or before our next regular council meeting?
I think that what we'll do is, you know, you can continue to speak with people, because the public hearing is not closed. We'll send out notices again when we have the report ready. And and we'll basically have a public hearing again so people can speak, once we have the additional information.
I apologize if this is a stupid question. So is it, is it a second public hearing or is it a read adjournment of this?
I think it'll be a second public hearing.
Okay, that's that's all the clarity I need. Thank you.
No, and the only reason why I'm proposing that, because I'm not sure we have all the information we need to make a decision tonight. That's going to be fair for everybody. And I'd like to make sure that 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 information is rock solid. And just hearing from the consultants and such as well, I'm not sure we have all that, those details yet. And I think given where this is at, we should make sure we do that. But we'll make sure it's done in a short order, but it's not going to be a long delay. Any other comments from council? Okay, anybody opposed? Motion's carried. Motion's carried. Okay, so we're going to move this public hearing. We'll be notifying the public. We're now going to move into our regular meeting. And so you could stick around for that. It's certainly not going to be as entertaining as the public hearing. But I'm going to entertain a recess, a motion to recess for five minutes before we do our regular meeting. Moved by Councilor Moreau, second by Councilor Scott Morvan. Okay, all in favor? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes.